Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
President.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yep.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
We are here.
Trustee Melczeski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I need any action on the agenda. I have no changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from May 28th. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 28th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from the special meeting of June 11th, 2019. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to talk about items not on the agenda? Anybody want any items not on the agenda talked about? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, number seven. This is a great day. Promotion of officers. Eric.
Thank you, President. Yeah, tonight is a great night for the promotion of our lieutenants in public safety. Before we start, before I introduce our soon-to-be Lieutenant Nick Kazloski and Brian Murphy, I just want to give a little background on these two. Not only are they fine officers and can be great supervisors, but they're longtime friends. They met back in college and kept their acquaintances together or to one another. And when Nick got over here to the department, he says, "Hey, this is a good gig. Why don't you come and take a look at it?" And Brian signed up, and he got on board four years ago with us. And since then, they made their way through the ranks. They've gone up off the paramedic school, and they both took the next step, and that's become the first-line supervision for this department. So it's pretty neat to see not just lieutenants, but a friendship, a lifetime friendship come forward here tonight. So at this time, I'd like to bring forward Nick Kazloski.
Nick has worked for the public safety department for eight years. Prior to joining the public safety department, Nick was employed at the city applicant police department for five years. Nick's father, Randy, is a retired public safety officer from our department, and Nick has been part of our public safety family for many, many years. Nick has promoted the rank of lieutenant of C-shift. At this time, Amy will be pinning up Nick.
Many, many years you make yourself known.
Actually, my dad had to leave the first day, not his first day, because I was being born.
Really?
Wow.
So you have a lot of history here, right?
A little bit.
Next, Brian Murphy.
Brian's worked with our department, the public safety department, for four years. Prior to public safety, Brian worked full-time as a detective sergeant with the West Milwaukee Police Department and part-time with the Menominee Falls Fire Department. Brian has promoted to rank lieutenant, and he'll be in charge and be a part of B-shift. At this time, his mother Lynn will be pinning him.
Just jab it in here if it doesn't...
One or another.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Now, Chief, you could stay up there, please, for just a moment. You can get rid of that if you'd like. Right now, while everybody is still here, I would like to recognize the chief for a great 25-year career he had here in Ashwabnan. Twelve years as chief. I believe you were the youngest chief ever in Wisconsin?
At the time.
At the time, yes. He was very instrumental in watching the development of Ashwabnan. Titletown Phase 1 was a biggie. Titletown Phase 2 now has started. You know, we're a unique village in the fact that we have 17,000 people at night, but all of our officers get to deal with about between 40,000 and 50,000 people during the day, so it's kind of a challenge at times. But they do an awesome job, and you let them very well. And very instrumental with some of the mutual aid agreements. And you were very involved in other organizations and committees, did an awesome job with Toys for Tots, always did the shopping for the kids at Christmas time, which we'd always have to put money into because we said wrong things at staff meetings, so staff always paid dearly for those. But, Chief, I'd just like to say thank you very much for all the years you dedicated to Ashwabnan and look forward to seeing you around again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. No, congratulations, you two guys. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, written communications. We have one letter that everybody has in front of them from the Bay Harbor Condominium Association, Owners Association. So we'll take care of that when we...
I'm just going to mention real quick the email that we all received about the bins up on Trulane, that complaining about those bins up there.
Oh, up by the library?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in my email and everything, so we have a copy of it.
Okay.
We've sent an inspector out on that, and we'll be looking at two potential ordinances regarding that situation.
It's been an issue in the past there with garbage stuff piling up that I've called down to the office here. It gets taken care of in short order, but it just continues to be a problem.
Yeah. Other communities have had longer-term problems with similar situations. I don't think the company's local, so we'll look into it further, but we have Jim Loy's been out, and we're on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other written communications or announcements? Okay, we have the consent agenda, which is the operator licenses, action on the change of agent for the Delta by Marriott, department reports for June of 2019, the investment update, and the May 2019 general fund financials. Does anybody want anything pulled?
Move to approve. The consent agenda is presented.
I just would like to ask, just 30 seconds, how are we doing? You know, we see these different items. I just want to know how we're doing financially. That's all. I don't have any problems. I just want to make sure we're okay.
We went through it all on finance and personnel, and everything's going as scheduled.
We're in the green.
Right now.
All right. Okay, that's, that's, things are going along according to HOIL. That's all, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, 10A. Public hearing regarding planned unit development zoning overlay ordinance 06-5-19 for 2350 South Oneida Street, parcel VA-120-6. Anybody like to speak against this item?
That's the old Ethan Allen store, for those of you who don't know what VA whatever is.
Yes.
Including me.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak for this item?
Move to return regular order business.
Second.
Okay, motion to close that public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. 10B. Public hearing regarding ordinance 06-3-19. Rezoning parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1 from I-2 Heavy Industry to R-2 Two-Family Residents and R-3 Multi-Family Residents for Alden Station. Anybody here would like to speak against this item? Anybody like to speak against this?
Again, this is the old Schneider National property.
Correct. Okay, anybody want to speak for this property? Okay. State your name and address, please.
Ryan Rudow, Rudow Homes, 5495 North Avenue, Denmark. I don't really have anything unless somebody's got a question for me. I just wanted to clarify something. I know there's been a little conversation, maybe it was the terms that we use as apartments, apartment-style condos, but there will be no apartments. Everything will be for sale, sold, and no rentals. So I just want to clarify that. That's the intention. That's what we're going to put in the HOA, the Homeowners Association, in documents as well, just so that nobody gets the perception that there's going to be apartments built there, because that's not what we're doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, state your name and address, please.
Susan Torborg, 1769 Condor Lane, Green Bay or Howard, 54313. Until three years ago, I was a resident of Ashwabnan, but I wanted to downsize my home on Mesa Drive and move into a condo. But at the time, and I still do have two young adult children at home, I needed a three-bedroom condo. And because there were none available in Ashwabnan, we needed to look for another residence, which was very hard on me because I've been teaching in Ashwabnan for 48 years now. So I was very excited about, three years ago, when Mike Ovinger mentioned to me the Mansell Flats was going to be condominiums. And then, over time, that got changed to apartments. So I'm very much in favor of this new project because with Mansell Flats and Bohemian Apartments and Elements Apartments, this will be something that can be owned. And I already know other people in Ashwabnan in their, you know, mid-upper 70s who would like to give up their three-bedroom ranches. And we could get kids for our schools in their homes if they had another place to go and own. And they've said, you know, "Susan, let me know what happens with this. We're very interested. We're to the point in our lives now where the yard work is getting a little too tedious for us." So I just want to say I'm very much in favor of this, very excited. I'm spreading the word. I asked Ryan a couple questions. One is, will they be at least partially pet-friendly? Because that would keep a lot of people like me out if not. I wouldn't give up my two small dogs. And then I had a question about the name, Alden Station, because to me, I thought of it as a bus station or a train station. I was thinking, oh, why wouldn't it be like Eldon Crossing, where people's lives are going to cross one another, something like that. And anyway, Ryan said that it came from the two people who founded...
Alan Don Schneider.
The Schneider plant there. So now I understand the Alden part of it. And I wanted to know a little bit, or as we continue going on here, about HOA fees, if they would cover the duplexes, the townhomes, as well as the condominiums. So anyway, I'm very excited about this project, and I hope it goes and comes quickly so we can get back here where we want to live.
Good. Well, thank you. It sounds like Ryan needs to hire you for his market manager. Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak for this project?
Well, just so this young lady is aware, I mean, she probably is, this board has been looking for years to do this. We've been looking, looking, and looking, and 2008, '09, and '10, everything went south. And now, finally, developers like Mr. Rudow and others, Mansell Flats, Elbow, it's going to be apartments, and others across the street, they're finally getting to the point where they're building some of these things. But it was not through lack of effort, I guarantee you. We've been, I just, my wife and I just sold our home. We stayed at Ashwabnan. We were fortunate. We found another place that we're renting. But I know exactly what you're talking about. People want to stay in Ashwabnan, and so young people can move in. They want to get out of their homes. And young people move in. That's just what we've been working on for, ever since I've been on this board, which is eight years, so.
And with our schools, we have the perfect neighborhood.
Right.
School situation.
Right.
In all of our elementary schools.
Right. Yeah. Okay, anybody else like to speak for this project?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10C. Public hearing regarding a planned unit development overlay zoning district for Alden Station, parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1. Is there anybody who would like to speak against this rezoning? Anybody like to speak against this rezoning? Anybody like to speak against? Okay, anybody like to speak for this rezoning? Anybody would like to speak for the rezoning? Anybody like to speak for the rezoning? Okay?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close that public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11. Action items. 11A. Action regarding planned unit development zoning overlay ordinance 06-5-19 for 2350 South Oneida Street, parcel VA-120-6. This is the former Ethan Allen site. Aaron.
Okay. As mentioned earlier, this is the former Ethan Allen site. The site is going to be redeveloped into a multi-tenant commercial building. The PUD is requested to reduce the front yard setback about three feet, reduce the parking requirement about nine stalls, and reduce the minimum green space from 15% to 13.9%. All very minimal reductions that staff is very comfortable with. The reality is that land prices within the Oneida Street corridor are very high, and you'll need to actually maximize the square footage that is built upon the site in order to make the numbers work. So again, as staff, we are very comfortable with the proposed PUD. The Ashwabnan Site Plan Review Committee and Planning Commission recommended approval at their respective meetings.
Okay, any questions?
Is there parking along Oneida Street, or is that just a drive?
That's actually a, there's a driveline, a drive-through lane that goes from the south side of the building around the front of the building, and then is a right turn only onto Oneida Street. So there's an existing access, driveway access point there right now. Right now, the parking lot's in front. They're changing that from a parking lot into just a driveline for the drive-through.
So the businesses will be basically facing both ways, just like down the street a little bit?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I was out for just a minute. Are they going to tear down that building or build a new one, or is that going to be...
It's basically going to be tore down, all except for the existing, I guess, the kind of vestibule area for Ethan Allen, that little porch area that's in front.
How many shops are going to go into? Do you have any idea? Three, four, five?
I'll say three.
Three, I think they mentioned in site plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the planned unit development zoning ordinance overlay 06-5-19 for 2350 South Oneida Street, parcel VA-120-6.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 06-5-19. I'm sorry, O6-5-19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11B. Action regarding ordinance O6-3-19. Rezoning parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1 from Industry 2 Heavy Industry to R2 Two-Family Residents and R3 Multi-Family Residents for Eldon Station. Aaron.
Okay. As discussed earlier during the public hearing, this is for the redevelopment of the former Schneider site, now known as Alden Station. The rezoning is to basically be the underlying zoning below the planned unit development, which will come up further down the agenda. The rezoning is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan as laid out in the staff report, which contemplates a mix of uses, heavily leaning towards residential within its property. The condominium and owner-occupied zero-lot line homes are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the overall vision for this area. Staff has recommended approval of the rezoning, as well as Plan Commission has recommended rezoning as well.
A couple of questions. Aaron, we're, on the map, we get, it's the gold area that's we're talking about right now, the yellow area.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about, rezoning right now?
Both the orange and the red. The orange is going to the R2 zoning district, and the red is going to the R3 zoning district. The reason for that is basically the type of units that are on those properties. The R2 is the duplex owner-occupied units and the four-townhome owner-occupied units, and the R3 are the multiple condo units in one building.
So are the R3 red, if you will, on South Broadway, those two buildings up there, I thought those were apartments, to somebody's discussion before.
Those are condominiums as well.
This, I, that's all condos now?
Yes. Yep, they've always been condos.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I thought they were apartments.
They're never apartments. We refer to them as apartment-style condominiums in terms of there's multiple units in a building that will look like an apartment from the outside in that there's a hallway with multiple units, but they're all going to be owner-occupied dwellings. Each person will buy their cube of space, if you will. And what we're doing with the rezoning, there's still that planned unit development overlaying the top that's really going to control this, but we need to have some underlying zoning. So that's why he's trying to match that up more closely to each of the final uses that will be on that site. But it's really going to be governed by the, to the extent that the planned unit development doesn't govern, you'd go back to that underlying layer. And so that's why we're trying to match kind of multiple layers with what's happening on the site.
And where do we leave off with the southwest corner?
That is carved out as a lot. It's called Lot 1. It's a large lot. We're going to wait to see what happens with the market. The intention is to do more of the 18-unit condominium buildings, but we have not subdivided it because we just didn't have the ideal layout and kind of just let's see what the market does. So, because otherwise, we'd have to go through some other hoops in terms of the subdivision process, of the subdivision and plating process.
But all the roadways are going to be installed at the onset?
Correct.
And utilities?
Correct. So we will go forward with demolition of the buildings in July, doing, Doug left me, doing a bidding process for that. And then we will separately move forward. We're working through some environmental issues right now, and then probably August, September timeframe, do additional bidding for all of the stormwater pond, the roadway, the utilities, everything all at once. So that will start in fall and probably have to finish up in spring and early summer.
So we did basically get some clarification on remediation or what has to be done there?
We are still working through that. We're having additional sampling done next week, the following week, shortly. And then, we've been having conversations with the DNR, so we need to submit a final plan. That will happen once these next round of testing results, but we have a verbal agreement with them in terms of the plan and where we're headed to overall in terms of trying to resolve those issues on the site. And for the most part, we'll be hauling a lot of the material off of the site.
Well, that's what I want to make sure of why I'm asking it, because this is residential, and I don't want to have an issue if the state or DNR is not going to give us the proper permits to make this a residential area.
They will. They understand that that's what our ultimate use is. Most of it will be hauled off, and then we're also in the process of applying for a grant to help offset some of those costs as well.
So are we putting the cart before the horse without having these permits in place with the DNR and agreements with them?
There is no cart. We still have to rezone it in order, and do the PUD in order to be able to do anything. As part of this, also, we are working through a subdivision plat for the entire property. We'll then get moving on demo for a timing perspective that has to go no matter what. And then, while we're working...
I agree with, don't get me wrong.
We'll be finalizing everything with the DNR in terms of the final plan for handling of materials. We are, have conversations with them each time we do samplings and discover more information, so they're on board with what we're doing. Also tied in with this is we have to do significant fill and pull it out of the wetlands. So all of those, those layers are all working together. If we waited until we had all of those things, it would be six years from now. It won't be that long, but we're making progress. It's just that we have to follow all the tracks multiples at the same time, just to try and capture some of the construction season.
I just want to make sure, because I, I'm in favor of this project, don't get me wrong. I mean, it's just that I don't want to have issues down the road when we can't build a house because of remediation or whatever, or it's going to be...
All of that will be...
Toxic for people or anything.
Yes. All of that will be resolved and cleaned up. We will, it will be cleaned up as part of the construction. They're kind of going hand-in-hand. You're not just going to clean out the soils and then not, not have a plan or then contract out to do the next work. So they're all kind of interrelated. But you won't be actually doing construction until probably October, right?
And the developer is aware of all of this. He, you're keeping in contact and all...
Sitting in all our meetings.
All right, yep, okay.
We talk a lot.
All right. Yeah, I bet you do.
So this is the, just the rezoning?
This one is, yeah.
Just step one.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of VA-162 and VA-174 from I-2 Heavy Industrial to R2 Family Residents and R3 Multi-Family Residents for Alden Station.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O6-3-19, rezoning those parcels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11C. Action regarding planned unit development overlay zoning ordinance O6-4-19 for Alden Station, parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1. Aaron.
The, as you reviewed or approved the underlying zoning, as Allison alluded to, the PUD overlay at this point is what will actually control the majority of the development on the site, deals with setbacks, green space requirements, so on, so forth. The PUD was recommended for approval by the Site Plan Review Committee and Planning Commission with staff conditions, the first one of which has been met. Approval of the rezoning of the property from I-2 Heavy Industry to R2 and R3, so we can check that one off. Approval of detailed landscape, lighting, and signage plans by the Site Plan Review Committee as applicable. Work with public safety in regards to wave-finding signage as project moves further along. Knox boxes are required in all multi-unit condo buildings. Work with public safety for locations as construction is further along. And work with public safety on following regards to fire access for fire lanes and building setbacks for those fire lanes for review. Buildings must be labeled, so address according to fire code, landscape plan we identified, and the multi-use trail should be wide enough for traffic flow in both directions as requested by Bike and Pet Committee.
As Aaron said, this has been gone through several, several of the committees already. If there's no questions, I'll move to approve overlay zoning ordinance O6-4-19 for Alden Station, parcel VA-162 and VA-174-1.
I'll second, but I have a question before we vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but further discussion.
All right. A PUD, that normally implies a significant agreement between the village and the developer. So that's not where we are tonight.
No, we have not worked through the developer's agreement yet. That'll be a separate item in the future.
Okay, all right.
Overall, keep in mind, the village owns this property. The village is subdividing this property. We are just working hand-in-hand... this property, we are just working hand in hand with the developer to do it, but should he walk away or this not work out, we'll just, not that you're irreplaceable, but like, we would replace him. We happen to really like him and we think he's going to do a great product, but ultimately, this is an investment by the village and this is us bringing it to you as to what we would like as staff to, to finish it, because we're the, we're the property owner.
But there will be a, a PUD developed agreement coming forward at some time in the future, assuming this all goes-
They're different things, like you're going to get a development agreement that will happen separately and that will bring through probably next month, we've exchanged some meetings here, but ultimately, we still want this PUD and, and even if we had a development agreement in place and say something went, went awry, you know, similar to what happened at Bay Harbor, 2008 happened, things tailed off, Ryan stepped in there for the other developer, but Ryan still had to do what the previous developer had established through that PUD. We don't have a development agreement with Ryan as we did with the previous developer at Bay Harbor, so we're setting up that whoever comes in is going to meet the standard that we are setting here today as to how we want that development to look and feel and the buildings and the qualities of the, the development in and of itself.
My question is, when we got here this evening, we have on our, our place here some concerns from Bay Harbor, have we met all those or has that been addressed at all?
I did have a meeting with a few of the members who attended the meeting this evening prior to the Special Plan Commission meeting. The primary concern there was related to actual rental units. Once we clarified that these are actually indeed all owner occupied units, concerns seem to be allayed. Now I think there's also certainly, we'll continue a conversation with the condo association moving forward, any other concerns that they may have, want to make sure we facilitate that dialogue.
Okay, I just want, neighbors, so I mean-
Right. I did call the condo association president earlier today, left a message, I was hoping to touch base with him, but I have not heard back yet.
Okay, thanks.
And keep in mind, they're getting a letter from us saying that this is happening, but they didn't really see the plan, so the first thing Erin did here was just walk through and show them the plans and concerns whether the developments were connected or anything, but that's, that's not the case.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve zoning ordinance O6-4-19 with staff conditions. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 11D, I am going to abstain from this and step out, so Mark will take over.
That's, that's, that's all we have on Alden Station for tonight. Well, you are, you're welcome to stay, absolutely.
Okay, next on the agenda is 11D, action regarding requested site plan review for new parking lot at 854 Morris Avenue, Avenue Parcel VA 66-7-C. Erin?
Okay, this is a site plan review that was, is within the sports entertainment district of the village's zoning code. Under the zoning code, any site plans within the sports entertainment district or village center district for that matter come to both Plan Commission and Village Board for final approval. The requested site plan review is for roughly the south one-third of the property at 854 Morris Avenue, which is directly east of Cheesecake Heaven, looking to pave that parking lot and then continue to use the northern two-thirds for basically Lambo events as a grassed area. So the paving will take, address some stormwater issues in the area, improve it. The Site Planner Review Committee did add, or change the curbing on the east side of the property from a standard step curb to a French or rolled back curb, and staff is certainly agreeable with that. So that was the recommendation of approval from Site Planner Review as well as Plan Commission. The only other condition of approval is from engineering is notify village when the tap into Borban storm sewer is being done and install property erosion control around the site per the plan.
I, I take it that everything's been gone through per, you know, what we're supposed to have lighting and ingress and all that kind of stuff too?
Yep, we're in good shape.
Okay.
I move to approve the requested parking lot for 854 Morris Avenue with the conditions stated by our, our, our village staff at parcel VA-66-7-C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Not. All those in favor of motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
While our illustrious village president is walking back to her post, is there some way, this last item we just discussed and the whole Alden Station, a picture's worth a million words, is there some way we can get the technology so that the people in the audience can see what we are seeing in our agenda packet?
Or to require your clerk to click through like a lot of pages?
Well, I know that, I know that.
If I have a request and I have the page number, I'll roll to it.
That's what I'm saying, you know-
You just have to ask Pat to move it, I'm sorry.
We have a way to do that on these little, on these little gizmos here, there should be a way, it would seem to me, that we could do it there.
We can.
We can.
With, with this, with, with the-
No, but it's computer.
No, with the computer.
Well, I mean, you don't want him to go through the whole darn thing, all I'm saying is if you have this on the left side, all he has to do is click on that particular item and it comes up.
Computers and tablets.
Can't we do that, the same thing here?
More or less, yes.
I'm sorry?
More or less, yes.
More or less, well, it's less now, but can we do more?
I will speak with Jeremy.
He can, yes.
Okay, all right, well, all right, I didn't mean to make a big issue out of it, just for people sitting here, you know, when you see that on, on the, on the screen, it doesn't mean a whole lot, the pictures are really worth a thousand words, but okay, thank you very much. I didn't know the clerk has been working on that favorously.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
11E, action regarding requested site plan review for Lambo Field Redevelopment LLC Parcel VA-54-5-800-Mike-McCarthy-Way. Erin?
Okay, this site plan review is also is within the sports entertainment district and therefore comes to Plan Commission and Village Board for approval. The existing building at 800 Mike McCarthy Way will be demoed and replaced with a new building to house basically technology for the cell companies, whether it's AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, so on so forth, to take on some of the bandwidth necessary for, during Lambo Field events. So the building itself will house those facilities. Couple of conditions of approval from staff as well as Site Plan Review and Plan Commission, all metal wall panels are to have concealed fasteners, all ground mount and roof mount mechanicals are to be concealed. From public safety, please follow Knox box requirements per village code. Forestry had a condition regarding species type of maple or snow capped Japanese tree lilac, and I guess that's due to the, our high pH soils, so you learned something tonight, we have high pH soils here.
Does this encompass all the way to the walkway along the backside, the east side of the, the Packer Practice Field?
It does not include the parking lot, so there's that parking lot just to the east of the walkway, this would be east of that yet, so if there's the vacant, the Andusey's parking lot, there's the storage building just to the west of that, this would be that next building right there, probably a small, I would say probably quarter acre parcel or so.
Mark, I think that's the old parts.
Right.
If there's no other question, I'll move to approve Lambo Field Redevelopment LLC Parcel VA-54-5-800-McCarthy, Mike McCarthy Way.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second, did you want to include with staff?
Oh, include the staff recommendations.
Okay.
Go with the second too.
Motion and a second to approve that redevelopment LLC Parcel VA-54-5 with staff conditions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 11F, action regarding resolution R6-2-19 authorizing the submittal of an application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation idle sites redevelopment grant program for Alden Station. Erin?
This is my last agenda item, I swear.
You're not going to turn it over to, oh, okay, that's right, go ahead.
No, I did not get a chip play.
The engineer behind you.
The requested resolution is a required component of a grant application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for an idle sites grant, it's the same grant program, we received the funding for the Capital Credit Union Park, in this instance, we're applying for a $500,000 grant to be matched with 1.67 million in matching funds. I would hope to apply for this in mid-July with an answer shortly thereafter.
If there's no other questions, I'd move to approve-
Second.
Resolution R6-2-19. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R6-2-19, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 11G, action on Argon Park Playground Purchase Recommendation. David, welcome, David.
Yes, thank you for having me. Yeah, we're looking for approval for the Argon Park Playground Purchase. Staff solicited six companies to submit a potential design for the new playground structure at Argon Park. We kind of went back and forth with these companies, working on designs that would fit the park, fit the neighborhood, and that we thought would be a good fit overall for the village. As we do with most of our park designs, we do send out voting options for the neighborhood residents so that they have input into each of these parks. There were letters sent out to 163 different addresses, and then they get a unique code to vote on their favorite design. When it came back for voting, if we actually scroll ahead to the next page, we do have a lovely picture of the design that was the winning design is by Northland Recreation.
167.
If it's not in there, I do have some pictures that I can hand out as well.
That's the pictures that are on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Find it, Ken.
I believe it should be 161.
Is that a one piece unit am I looking at?
Um, it actually has a couple of different components to it.
Okay.
Um, there's going to be the main place structure with the slides and some climbing features as well as the monkey bar area, but there's also kind of a standalone, it's almost like a spider web rope design.
All right, I see it.
Well, this went through Park Board and along with this, at this park, we got swing sets and spring, new spring animals, I believe that are going to be installed at the same time.
Correct.
Last year was budgeted for, I believe, $57,000.
$47,000 total for the project.
Okay.
This structure would be $37,000, and then there's another $10,000 budgeted for the concrete, new wood chips, the new swing set, and then the spring animal as well.
Where's, is that near?
Uh, yep, that's the, that's the, the structure right there, so as you can see, kind of the, that's kind of the spider web rope design. We have something kind of along those lines at Sand Acres and it's a very popular feature. If you drive by, there's always a group of kids playing on that.
That park is well used.
Yes, it's crazy at that park.
Just so you know, that's, that was explained to us, that's like a cable that's coated with a rope or something that they haven't had any issues with it at all deteriorating.
Correct, yep, and this is, um, this is a company that we've worked with before in the past, so we're very, very familiar with their products, we have some of their structures already in place in the village as well as at some of the schools, and it's going to be, uh, it's going to be installed by the Parks Maintenance Department, Glenn and Dan have the fun task of putting it all together, but makes a big difference when it's a company that you've worked with and you kind of know how their product works.
Isn't it kind of strange, they all came in at $37,000? I mean, that seems strange, Ed.
Yeah, they're, I guess they were, they were kind of given a number to work with, so they knew, they knew what number that they had to come in at.
Oh, I see, okay.
So-
You gave them a number and said, what can you do with it?
Yeah, yeah, and then we kind of swap in and out different futures that are similar in price to make it work.
All right, that makes sense, thank you.
Was the one below it, the fish one, was that the runner up or something?
Yeah, that one was the, the one that was second place.
Okay.
And actually, um, the Northland Rec, the one that won with the 22 votes, obviously Parks and Rec staff all kind of have their preference too, and that was kind of the overwhelming choice in our department.
Perfect, thank you. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Northern, uh, Northland Recreation Little Tykes design for the park at, for Argon Park.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the Northland Recreation Climbing Structure for Argon Park. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'd just like to, if I could, just thank the board again for inserting this back into the budget after it was cut, it's much needed and like somebody just said before, that it's, it's heavily used and especially now in the summer with the soccer fields on there now, and, and sometimes there, that parking lot is full of cars and there are, gosh, I drive by there and there, there's cars in the street and there's, uh, there's, there's just multiple families, there might be, you know, 30, 40 kids running around the soccer fields, different teams, and, and the neighborhood will appreciate that, it's much needed.
It, you know, we, I tried to contact one of the areas over there about possibly working together to do something with Argon Park and into the, the area with the woods and stuff, but that never transpired, so I'm glad we can get this done. Okay, 11H, action on 2019-2020 Retail Alcohol License Renewal, T-Bacon BBQ LLC DBA, T-Bacon BBQ. Patrick?
Since we last met, the, previously the board approved all of the retail alcohol license renewals, we were just missing one, T-Bacon missed the cutoff, it's before you this evening, they're asking renewal, they're Class B beer, and I would ask for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license renewal request contingent that all fees are paid, are they, Pat?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 11I, action to amend license premise description, Just Down From The Stadium LLC DBA Stadium View.
Just a matter of housekeeping, as you know, the village board approved the renovations to the stadium view, and this just adds verbiage to the premise description of their license for the, to include the second floor and the new first floor bar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the license premise description for Just Down From The Stadium LLC, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I'd just like to make a comment, the bottom floor is rocking and rolling tonight, really, really packing up people in there, that just shows that summer is here.
Yeah.
For a day or two.
Second day.
For a day or two, enjoy it. Okay, 11J, review and action regarding the award of the 2019 Batuminous Plaining and Paving Contract. Doug?
Yes, thank you, before you tonight is this year's Mill and Resurfacing Contract. Received two bids, we receive two bids each year, there are two contractors that can do this work, they pre-qualify each year, Northeast Asphalt and MCC, as you see, the bid from Northeast Asphalt was $737,365, the bid from MCC was $757,840. Our budget for this year was $625,000, at the end of the year, some excess funds were put into that account, we were going to tab an additional $75,000 to bring us up to $700,000 worth of budgeted money for the mill pave this year, so with that, like we do in previous years, we'll work with the contractor to meet that budgetary amount, but we would recommend a- work with the contractor to meet that budgetary amount, but we would recommend approval to Northeast Asphalt for their contract amount at this time. And I can't remember, I thought I did, but attached to your document, was there the list of streets for this year? Okay, good. So that'll be our, our listing for this year. Notices will go out probably next week. We always wait till everything is approved before we send out notices to the residents. The crews have been out televising the sanitary and storm sewer, and we've been checking all the valves and hydrants on those streets to make sure they're operational. So if that work is already underway, the mill pave work will actually start curb and gutter work, probably start after the 4th of July holiday.
I can see that getting in and out of my neighborhood, our neighborhood, is gonna be a bit of a challenge probably when this goes on.
There'll be lots of orange cones sprouting up in the next few weeks over there.
Does someone get shortchanged because we are $39,365 short of the bid?
No.
That's, those are quantity amounts, and in talking with both of the contractors, they feel the quantities that are in there are on the high side. When we estimate our asphalt tonnages, the factor that we use is slightly higher than what the contractors use, so they feel they're going to be able to get it done for close to the amount that we have out there. So we put out, we put it out, but we put it out the bid with our quantities, so we're comparing apples to apples when they submit bids to us.
Okay, well, I don't want to spend more money than we need to, but I also don't want anybody to get shortchanged. If we need, you need a couple bucks, come, bring it back. You know, you don't create.
We'll stop, we'll stop by your, by your do.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I'm not even gonna say it, the paving contract for 2019.
Batuminous.
Yeah. I know, you wanted to say it.
I know.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2019 Batuminous Plaining and Paving Contract in the amount of $739,365 to Northeast Asphalt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 11K, possible discussion and action on ordinance O-6-1-19 regarding impact fee application. Tony.
All right, what you have before you is a proposed revision to our impact fee ordinance. Essentially, what was happening under the administration of the ordinance is there's a unique situation where the division of commercial property by CSM created additional fees each time a commercial development would require a split of land under the CSM. So as a result, previously the Plan Commission and the board had held the administration of administering the ordinance in that, that shape or fashion. So what we've done now is revise the ordinance language to just apply the subdivision by CSM to only residentially zone properties and eliminate it for commercial properties, so there isn't this multiple charging aspect. And then there's just some additional cleanup language so that the ordinance is also consistent with state statutory requirements.
So any business is not required to pay an impact fee? A new business?
It would be with each successive type of subdivision by CSM.
So maybe to give an example of what was happening, so if you take shops at the village when that happened pre-2008, it was set up, it was intended that that was gonna be one parcel. Post-2008 for financing purposes, Midwest Expansion had to keep subdividing off that parcel in creating like these long flake-shaped lots so that there was independent financing for each unit, even though that's not really what it was intended for. So the first time he did a CSM for the property to create that parcel, he was charged an impact fee. Then each successive time that he had to carve off those individual lots, he was assessed a new impact fee, and those impact fees would be $50,000 per time, so they're significant. In addition, a commercial business either before and now, after this ordinance, if should it be adopted, also has to pay an impact fee when they get their building permit. So, and that's based on creation of full-time employees. So they'll still get an impact fee at that time, but, but what was, what was happening, and it's rather, we're unusual across the state because other people are not necessarily doing this in a commercial capacity, is it's happening with that CSM and those subdivisions of the parcels. The reason it's really set up and where it's largely happening throughout the state is on a residential subdivision where you take a large tract of farmland, for example, and then you subdivide it, and then you're trying, because you're creating those new homes, you have an impact on your park system, and you may have to create, you know, like Sand Acres, for example. All that land was developed, that when it was subdivided, they dedicated some land for the park. There's money and funds there to enhance and build the park as a result of it, and there's a park development fund that we use occasionally for other enhancements in parks. What's unusual is that we were doing it also on the commercial side, but it was creating this situation that was an unfair situation, at least we felt, and substantial fees for those developments. So what this does is eliminate those large fees that were, are happening on the CSM side on the commercial properties, but they'll still get charged an impact fee when they come to do a building permit.
So is an apartment complex considered residential or business? Because it is a business.
I'm just trying to think through, like, it really comes down to the CSM, so it's, or if it's coming through a residential subdivision type. It's, it's more about the land, if you will, and how it's being created. So, and part of the problem we're having is the apartments that we're building, it's more on combinations where that fee's not happening anyway, because you're taking multiple lots and joining them. That's not where it's happening so much as you're taking a large piece of property and subdividing it. Like the Montgomery property, it's undeveloped. We carved off a section, there was a fee for the hotel, but then if the Montgomery property, the remainder of it were to be subdivided for future developments, each of those successive times, whether it was an apartment or anything, would go on it, then it would see a fee. Does that make sense?
If I said I understood any of this, I'd be lying.
Whenever there's something developed.
It's less about the use and more about separating.
Right, that much I understand, yeah.
And that's how we develop Sand Acres, by, the Park Board was able to put the amenities in the park because we had that impact.
That I understand. The rest of it is really over my head. I just, but that's all right.
Kind of depends on where the, how the land is coming to be separated. So there's still a fee, like even in apartments are treated somewhat like, if it was part of a residential subdivision and you cut off, you know, sliced it up, the farmland, and some of it is single family, and some of it would be a large commercial lot, there's gonna be, there would be a fee for that. But on the, if, even if it was an apartment, they're still gonna get a fee, it's just a different fee amount when you actually get the permit. So the residential homeowner, I think, is getting charged $971 or $871, something like that. But then the apartment, the individual unit, is paying like $678 or something like that.
All right.
So when we do Alden Station, each of those individual home permits will have a fee, and each condo block building is each gonna see a fee as well. But the part we're carving out has to do with separating the land, doing the CSM.
Doug, can you add to that?
What about, what about across, what about across the street at Element or Bohemian?
Those were lot combinations, so it wasn't playing out the same. We had, we had several different small lots, and we combined them, so it wasn't happening there.
Bohemian, we didn't.
This is, this is when we separated.
They didn't subdivide that property. They, that is one large property still. They did one separation. Capital did, in terms of what it sold off and kept a portion of it. But that, I think was also, I'm not sure if that kicked in, or because of the size of it may have been.
Well, I just want to make sure that if we do this, what the Bohemian element are, if they're not paying the impact fee, and we have to create a park.
They're still paying an impact fee. It's based on their permit, though. It doesn't have to do with the subdivision of the land. That parcel over there, where the four Bohemian buildings are, are all on one parcel of land, so they weren't gonna get charged. If that subdivision, though, if they had ended up in the future subdividing it into four pieces, it would have been assessed, yes. But they're still paying, like, each of their, like, the elements, I think it was like $70,000. They're still paying in. And we have not been billing under this because everything was put on hold, and we've been kind of struggling to find some sort of solution. We've gone through with a consultant to try and re-look at all of our fees and what was happening. And so now that a couple years have gone by, we actually went back and looked at, like, how many fees did we defer and what was the change? And there was about $8,000 in fees that were levied, and that would have been appropriate, I guess, in our mind, as opposed to the fees that are redundant. That is an enormous amount, and those have, that's what was really put on hold. So in terms of the true impact, in terms of what revenue, it's really quite minimal in the grand scheme of things, and you're still gonna see considerable revenue from the actual building permits themselves, whether it's commercial, residential, multifamily, whatever. There's still a fee for the actual construction.
But if it's.
Something.
I'm just gonna go back to, I mean, it's, if we don't get park impact fees, if you will.
You're still getting park impact.
And we have to develop a park.
You're still getting park impact.
We can't do it during, during our regular budget because there's not enough funds in our normal budget.
You're still getting all your park. So let's go back to the example at shops at the village. It's almost like what we thought was not fair is they were getting double dipped, if you will. He created a large lot, he would have had to pay a fee. Then he took out a building permit, paid another fee. So he got charged, let's just say, $50,000. Then he built a building, and then based upon how many employees that created, he paid another fee. Then he will have to pay another fee for when he built the carpet outlet, or whatever it was. And he would have had to pay that. But because for financing purposes, he had to create that as a separate lot, he got charged another $50,000.
Well, that's, that's not right. That's not right.
That's what we're stopping, is purely that part.
Okay.
We spent three years trying to slice and dice and make sure all the other unfairties and unfair things that could happen, and at the end of the day, this seemed to be the most glaring. There's some other oddities, like our fees are based on how many full-time equivalent employees you have. Well, FedEx, hopefully they're not listening. They have, they don't really have a lot of full-time employees for the most part. Those are independent contractors, so they're not really counting those. Or if somebody built a great big giant warehouse and it created 10 employees, but they sold it five years later, and all of a sudden there's 2,000 employees in that same space because of the change of use, we don't capture that. But we can't, we decided we couldn't fix those things, that those are kind of one-off things that happen and could be unfair in either way, either unfair to us, unfair to the business. But this one particular small section is what we thought we needed to fix, that it seemed like it was hitting the same person over and over again. Happened at shops at the village, happened at the Gordman site, where it's driven by the financing as to why they end up subdividing that property, and that's what we want to switch.
Now I got it.
Does that make sense?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 06-1-19.
After all that, you're gonna make that motion. Good man. Good man. I'm glad you're satisfied with it. Second, I motion.
To finish this up.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O-6-1-19 regarding impact fee application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11L, action on a tax collection agreement between Brown County and the Village of Ashwabnan. Patrick.
Same agreement as past years. I just asked for your approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the tax collection agreement between Brown County and the Village of Ashwabnan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11M, action on ordinance number O-6-2-19, creating Chapter 2, Section 2-7-743, Board of Canvassers, Central Count. Patrick.
With your approval this evening, what we're gonna do in the future, especially, it's far more noticeable for the larger elections such as the gubernatorial and presidential. Absentee voting is growing and growing throughout the village and the county, and what this ordinance will do is, it, as noted, Central Count, it'll be centralized. We would no longer process absentee ballots at each polling location. Rather, we would do so on Election Day in the office of the Clerk-Treasurer. We would have a Board of Canvassers who take an oath, they're election inspectors, and all of that would, by doing that in office on Election Day, that would expedite the lines at the polling locations. This has been on the books for a few years. Some of our fellow municipalities have undertaken this. It seems to work. I took a wait-and-see approach, and I think we're at the point to finally go to the Central Count, so I ask for approval.
Move to approve ordinance number O-6-2-19.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance number O-6-2-19. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 12, items for next agenda.
I just want to make a comment. Doug, I've been getting a lot of, not a lot, but several people have contacted me about the collection fee for Big Garbage Day that we, I think instituted a meeting or two ago, for over a yard or something.
Correct, that's not during your special collection week, but one put out outside of the third week of every month.
It's outside of that time.
Correct.
Yes.
That one week, that one week each month, whatever you set out is picked up.
Okay. I'll clarify with them then.
Yep.
You don't, you don't, I just, all I'm saying, we don't pick up televisions, right?
No.
I didn't, what you've had, sitting outside, a neighbor of ours, a couple doors down, has been sitting out there for weeks. I think I'll tell them they don't.
Roughly 2013 or so is when that act was passed, and that's when all the communities stopped picking them up.
Okay, thank you. Move to adjourn to a closed session?
Closed session items. Patrick.
During the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabnan may convene at a closed session pursuant, session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851-G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to public safety and keen Ashland Holdings litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved; B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851-E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the development of parcel VA-90-4-9 and VA-90-4-10 related to tax incremental district numbers 3 and 5, and parcels VA-163-1 and VA-160-4 related to tax incremental district number 3, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene an open session person in Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Move to go to closed session. Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Voice vote.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Malcheski.
Yes.
President Kardaski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.